Good evening, welcome to the December 19th meeting of the Village of Cold Spring zoning board of appeals. I'm Aaron Wolf, I'm the chair. And also with us we've got Eric Worth, John Martin, Laura Bozzi, and Donald McDonald. We are unpaid volunteers appointed by the village board. And we are here to help interpret and grant variances to the zoning code. We also have Michael Mel, our board secretary and videoographer. We've got two things on the agenda tonight. First, we're going to approve minutes. We've got about four to go through, so we're a bit behind. And then I'm going to turn the meeting over to Donald McDonald. He's the acting chair. And he is going to run the public hearing for 21 Parsonage Street. I live across the street, so I'm recusing myself from the discussion and voting on that. Alright, so let's jump into our minutes. These are in chronological order, so we can start with the September 19th minutes. Okay, are there any changes to 919?
About to actually-
No, Eric, you good there?
There was a minor typo in the third paragraph. Beginning 21 Rock Street says "and area" variances.
Okay.
Sorry, I strike the S after variances.
Um, great. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
Who, who's absent, so? Okay, so it's just the three of us then on this left side here, my left.
So I make your motion to approve the minutes of September 19th, 2019 as amended with Eric Worth's statement.
Okay. Eric, please-
I'll second the-
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I'll abst- is there enough, are there enough people that I can abstain for ones that I didn't attend?
Yes.
Great, so I'll abstain for all but the last.
Okay. Um, alright, 10-3. Is this correct at the end where it says 919 minutes approved? Those are the ones we just looked at.
Yes.
Okay, if that's true, then we can ignore our previous approval. I know, correct that typo. Um, any other changes to that?
No.
I don't see any.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of 10-3.
I'll second. Okay, Donald, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 10-17?
Looks okay to me.
Looks good to me also. John, Donald? I think it looks good to me. Any more time? No, I'm okay, okay. Um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move the, to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2019 as written, but no change.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Aye. 11-7? The only thing I'm seeing here is a possible spelling error of Maria DeMayo's name, DeMayo. And I want to double check the, the exact percentage of the variance that was requested. Because I think it changed, um, well, it did change, but I'll go back and look at that.
Uh, I have, uh, in the bulleted list on page one, um, the sixth item about the roof over the rear patio.
Mm-hmm.
It ends, "but this is not desirable." Um, I don't know what that means. Does that refer to something that?
Um, maybe we should just strike that. Would that work?
Yeah, I don't remember anything coming up like that, and it's not clear whose desires are being-
In my-
On what grounds.
I remember it coming up, I think, um, but I don't remember, I don't remember who exactly brought it up, but I do remember it coming up. But I don't know that we need that in the minutes.
Okay.
Because ultimately it was, um, they did decrease.
Should we, um, strike? Everybody okay with striking that? I'm fine.
Okay.
This will be fine more.
This is the packet.
Any other changes to 11-7? Okay, look, okay, somebody make a motion please.
I move to approve the minutes of November 7th as amended.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay. Last one. 11-21.
In the bulleted list, um, certificate of authority, would that be certificate of appropriateness?
Yeah.
On the second page, down under the board discussion was, the variance requested translates into an additional square footage of 77 square feet? With the amended, when they took away the, uh, overhanging porch? What was the new proposed addition, just 77 square feet in total beyond what the original footprint was?
An addition of... I want to double check that, I don't see that exact number on-
I, I think what it turned out to be is after the back overhang off of the garage was removed, the total additional square footage being sought was 77.
That's, that sounds right, I'll double check that before I finalize.
On the last, second to last page, 21 Parsonage, variances required for front and rear yard setbacks and parking, and also for lot air, lot size.
Okay. Anything else on 11-21? Good.
I'll say.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion to approve?
Move the, to approve the minutes of November 21, 2019, uh, as written with the addition of looking into the square footage increase. Overall, that was sought and approved.
Okay, great. Second?
I second the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, we're up to date. Alright, so Donald, I'll turn it over to you. These materials were in the box, I think it's some new drawings. John? Do you want to turn it?
He said he was going to be late.
Oh, he did?
He said 10 minutes.
Oh. Alright, alright, well, alright, so you're, um, so I'm, oh. Good night, thanks.
Okay, so we're here to open a public hearing on the application of Samuel Bro, 178 Avery Road Garrison, New York, for the following variances from the requirements set forth in the village code. In order to permit construction of a single-family dwelling on a substandard lot. A, to allow the proposed dwelling on a 3,360 square foot lot where the code requires 7,500 square feet. B, to permit one all three parking space where two are required. C, to allow a dwelling on a lot with a width of 48 feet when the code requires 75 feet. D, to allow a lot depth of 70 feet where 75 feet is required. E, to permit a front yard setback of 2.2 feet for the dwelling when the code requires 25 feet. F, to permit one side yard for the proposed dwelling to be 1.5 feet when the code requires 10 feet. And G, to permit a dwelling on a lot with 48 feet, with a 48 foot by 50 foot square when the code requires at least 50 foot by 50 foot square. Subject parcel is located at 21 Parsonage Street, Cold Spring, New York. Property is located in the R1, one-family residence dwelling zoning district, as well as the village's local historic district. So, who's here? Do, we have, um, Sam Bro.
Yep, there, the receipt I'm giving.
And we have Paul Henderson. Uh, and, um, do you have your green cards and the list, um, of the people that you were supposed to send them to?
I have the card, Sam Bro.
Oh, here he is. This is our village attorney. I was asking him a problem. John, maybe you could compare the green cards?
Sure.
The list?
John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you not to attempt, you're gonna be blinded by the object.
While he's doing that, do you guys want to start your presentation?
Bear with me-
We don't need an easel because everything's on the projector?
We do, we will need an easel because we have, we have some whiteboards we'll put up afterwards.
Okay.
Um, I have an easel too, if we need them.
Alright.
Just bear with me while we adjust this, uh, it was just fitting on there, so hopefully you'll get closer to-
Paul, you're going to give us copies of this presentation?
I, yeah, we have, we'll have four copies tonight. I have a fifth copy for the public to review. And, you know, it's, um-
Right. Members of the public, if you can't, have trouble seeing this, don't be bashful. We, you know, ask you to move.
Yeah, please come down this way.
You can. What's going on? If you need to reorient yourself, whatever. We're doing the best we can in a building that wasn't really designed for a projector. So, um, wait, let me look at this. Can you see Matt from there? Do you want to get him up there?
Hi.
Matt, can you see?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, I'm Paul Henderson, uh, from the architecture firm Sigler Henderson Studio, and I'm presenting on behalf of the honor of 21 Parsonage Sam Bro. I have been to many public hearings and have to say that as a member of the public, I have frequently wanted to be able to see the material information that the boards are reviewing. And unless you really make the effort to go to the village office beforehand, um, the public doesn't always see the documents. And it's in this spirit that we have put together this presentation. We're here tonight to review an application for variances for 21 Parsonage Street. The property is home to a stable constructed between 1877 and 1880. At that time, the property consisted of two structures. What is now 36 Pine Street and the dwelling that was originally constructed as a store. And what is now 21 Parsonage, where the stable constructed for use in association with the store, continues to stand. So here's the house, and there's the stable. And the stable is the top, is the subject of this presentation and hearing. The red rectangle locates the property within the neighborhood near the intersection of Parsonage and Pine Streets. The applicant, Sam Bro, filed for a building permit and per village code procedure, was denied and referred to both the zoning board of appeals and the historic district review board.
Well, Paul, would you go back and check? Can I interrupt a second? Uh, could you just ID the streets so people could-
Sure, this is Parsonage here.
Yeah.
And this is Pine here. Nelsonville border is right there.
Can I ask another question? Is that the actual lot size or is that a practice?
Pretty close to it. I think it's pretty close to it, yeah. This survey prepared for the previous owner of the property shows the stable where it is currently located and where the new family, one-family dwelling is also proposed to be located. Which is the reason we didn't, we have a, a, a property plan as well, plot plan, but it's really no different than what it is. The referral identified four variances that were required and subsequently the ZBA identified three more variances that must be sought along with a certificate of appropriateness from the HDRB before a building permit can be issued. This is the current Putnam County tax map of the village of Cold Spring showing individual tax lots and numbers. As you can see by its crudeness, this map has been assembled from the five individual map sheets showing the village of Cold Spring. This map forms the base for much of the mapping in the presentation. The property is typical of half of the lots in the R1 district, particularly those that are within the national and local historic districts in Cold Spring. Per the village code adopted in 1967, the 21 Parsonage tax lot is smaller than required for the R1 district. The existing structure is closer to the property lines than allowed, and it is closer to the street than allowed. That is, the front and side yards setbacks are non-conforming.
You're going too fast, will they?
Am I? Okay, I'll slow down. They just want, part of it is trying to, trying to keep it short, but, okay. As we all see, as we will see, excuse me, the main difference between the 21 Parsonage Street lot and most in the historic districts isn't that it has different dimensional characteristics, but that the lot is not pre-existing non-conforming. The lot that the stable originally occupied was split into two lots in 1984. The zoning board of appeals is probably not accustomed to having village history play a role in their considerations, but the history of this lot is essential in this instance to understand why Sam purchased the property, why our firm is involved, why we think it is important for the HDRB and the ZBA to review the project in tandem. And most critically, why two variances in particular are being sought to preserve the historical architectonic relationship between the structures at 36 Pine and 21 Parsonage Street. Sam has stated that he purchased the property because he fell in love with the structure's history, iconic design, and anomalous nature. All of which make the barn special and worth preserving. Where most people interested in purchasing the barn wanted to tear it down and build something new, Sam saw it as an opportunity to honor the history of the building by building a reverent quote "memory building" in its place that preserves all of the notable characteristics of the barn, its position, size, roof pitch, and stark simplicity. The design team firmly believes that accessory structures play a key, if typically overlooked, role in preserving historical fabric. Primary structures are just that, primary. But in Cold Spring, like many other 19th century towns and villages, accessory structures in the form of outhouses, stables, barns, sheds, ice houses, wellcaps, and summer kitchens provided the necessary, the infrastructure required for a pre-modern community. This book by George Harney from 1870 provides suggested pattern plans or plans for a wide range of accessory structures. Like other early structures, they contribute to the historic character of the individual sites and to a district as a whole. We believe that because secondary structures make important contributions to a site and the district, helping to interpret how an entire site was used historically, the retention and preservation should be strongly encouraged. Some of these accessory structures have evolved and been renovated to suit the changing needs of property owners and community. Some are abandoned due to poor maintenance, lack of resources, and so due to the difficulty of adaptive reuse. Far too many from before 1935 are deteriorating or have been lost forever. Several examples of the adaptive reuse of accessory structures in Cold Spring include the Carriage House on Marion Avenue, the Stone Street stable, and the Gate House on Morris Avenue and Craig Site Drive. A barn was lost just last year on Pauling Avenue. Another barn that sat on top of a rock crest on Campbell Avenue was demolished in the early part of this century. And a northern avenue between Garden and Church Streets and Early Garage was demolished also in the early 2000s. Many accessory structures visible from the street are clearly in need of urgent attention to prevent their loss. If I go back to this slide in a minute. You probably all know this building on Stone Street, it's number two. It was this stable on Stone Street. It was actually a pretty well-known place because it was a big stable downtown. You won't recognize it here, but, but if you imagine that it has another story on top of it and the roof is rotated, and more, most prominently it has some very large columns that hold up a balcony in front, that's that same building. So that's an example of adaptive reuse. The village of Cold Spring zoning code was developed and adopted in 1967, primarily to address development of any remaining vacant land in the village. You probably recognize a lot of the names on there. The very first village of Cold Spring zoning map was adopted- The very first village of Cold Spring zoning map was adopted at the same time, ending nearly 150 years of pre-zoning growth, characterized by utilitarian, perhaps ad hoc development, but with a sensitive and now considered picturesque result, which we are all working to preserve in the greatest degree possible. If you've ever read the code, you will be well aware of the divide between the dimensional requirements of the 1967 code and the built reality of the majority of lots in the historic districts. And this is the reason we see the need for a close working relationship between the ZBA and the HDRB on this particular project.
Paul, could you go back? Show us on the map where this Twenty-One Parsonage is?
Sure.
Right there. So it's in the local historic district?
That's correct. And why this part of Parsonage is not in the local historic district, I don't really know, actually, because those houses in some cases were built before these that we're looking at.
There's probably as much as taken stomach at the time.
Unless the whole block got together inside it too.
That's what I mean.
Our firm has been researching and documenting accessory or so-called secondary structures for some time in Cold Spring and in the area. Of the accessory structures built in Cold Spring over the course of the last 155 or so years, which we have been able to document by various means, including historical maps, Google Earth, and fieldwork. There's a lot of, lot of maps, and they show some parts, but not others, and Bing as well. Only three of historical accessory structures remain in the immediate area of Twenty-One Parsonage that date to before 1912. So these are the dates of the previous map. You can go back to it, please, here. And those are the three remaining. This is the barn we're talking about. Some would say that the stable is not a significant building as a piece of architecture, nor was it likely to have been very unusual at the time it was built. You've already seen some of the many photos in the Putnam County Historical Museum collection showing stables, barns, and similar accessory buildings in the village. What is unique about Twenty-One Parsonage is that it is here. We can see it, touch it, and document the original and still standing mortis and tenon frame. That it is a humble building, which has withstood the forces of development, weather, and disuse, is a testament to the modest but robust original framing. Although a final determination has not yet been made, the team is strongly considering reusing the actual timber frame. As the building has not been moved, we can see the space between it and the brick house as it would have been when it was built. The space between is equal importance to the buildings themselves. The structures are almost as far away from each other as possible to still be on the same original lot. Maybe in an attempt to keep the stable smell and flies away from the house and stable. The stable appears on this 1912 Sanborn insurance map, the very first Sanborn map that concerned itself with the area, this area of Cold Spring. And before then, Sanborn maps really focused on lower Main Street and the Foundry. The 1912 map identifies the structure as a two-story stable with a shingle roof. So it's hard to see because it's a poor image, but this is the structure. The two indicates the stories. If you look closely, you can see that there's an X that goes from corner to corner. That's always symbolizes it as a stable. And the small X, which is opposite the big X from the two at the bottom, indicates that it's a shingle roof. By 1927, the structure is indicated as functioning as a garage, using the letter A for automobile. Thirty-Six Pine has again been converted into a store designated by an S, to replace the previous D for dwelling. It was common for barns to be converted to garages once cars replaced horses. Sadly, the protective roof and siding envelope has been poorly maintained in the more recent years, but the design team and anyone familiar with the interior of the building knows that the heavy timber frame is currently in salvageable condition. Looking at the exterior, most people probably see that the roof is unintentionally green, that portions of the siding have been replaced, that it is leaning slightly, and would appear to be a welcoming home to some of the species of wild animals we all know to be in the village. It's up for deer. Sam is proposing to use the new structure as a one-family dwelling, consistent with the allowable property use in the R1 district. This is the street elevation of the new structure, showing the shutters in their open and closed positions. It is our opinion that the village is fortunate to have someone willing to go to the trouble and expense of preserving the historical dialogue between the structures by building a new structure in the same location. Using the same massing and dimensions, roof slope and height, and preserving its character further by cladding the structure with vertical siding, different but evocative of the existing. So to reiterate, the structure was built as an accessory building. Once the lot was divided by a previous owner, Mr. Salvatore Vitanzo, in 1984, it became a principal building on its own lot. From a historical perspective in its current location, it continues to read as an accessory structure to Thirty-Six Pine.
Can you just say again what you just said about 1984?
That's when the, when the lot was split. Into two.
No, no. We have a 64 tax map that shows, it showed those two lots existing then in 1964. We don't know when it was split.
Okay.
So, just clear up that.
Locating the new structure in the same location of the existing lot will preserve that relationship.
Do you have any drawing, photo, rendering showing the shutters open?
No, I don't have any rendering, not, not in this group. Does, we do have them, but we don't have...
Clay does.
Yeah, we don't have them here. We could provide those if that helps.
Well, I imagine...
Not renderings, but we have...
At some point, you do plan to open the shutters. Right?
Yeah.
It would be, it would be good to see what this looks like with the shutters open.
We have the elevations, which we already showed. We could do a rendering maybe.
I think it'd be nice to see a rendering with the shutters open.
Okay. So to locate the building exactly where it is requires both front and side yard variances be granted. So this is interesting to me, kind of phenomenologically, that these, this building has gone back from, from being an accessory structure and not really the principal structure on its lot. This map shows the area conforming, that is, conforming by area, R1 lots in light green, i.e. those having 7,500 square feet or more. This map shows both the area conforming lots, again in the light green, and the area nonconforming lots in dark green within the village of Cold Spring. Haldane School and other various tax-free lots are not shown. Of the 583 residential lots in Cold Spring, 303, or 52%, are area nonconforming, meaning they do not have the code-required 7,500 square feet of area.
Can I go over for a second?
Sure.
What he means is, in 1967, when the zoning code was adopted by the village, all the lots that were less than what the code was looking for became what they considered to be existing nonconforming. They were accepted. You weren't gonna throw somebody out of the house, okay? They were accepted, they were legal, but they're called nonconforming, which is, it's an okay, that's fine. That's nonconforming. But that's what he's talking about. These were lots that were developed before the code came in. Code comes in in 1967. Nobody's getting front out of their houses, so everything as it was, was accepted. But going forward, you had to, you had to adhere to the code or come for variances.
Another term for nonconforming and which is permitted after the code comes into effect is the term grandfathering, as they sometimes use.
We also learned that the code writers knew darn well what they were doing. They gave six months after the code was adopted in June 1967. They gave six months for anybody who had a lot such as Twenty-One Parsonage to build a house on it. They gave them six months grace period before they then started enforcing the code.
Okay.
There were blue lines on the last map, what were those?
I'm sorry, I don't see them. Oh, yeah, the little numbers. Those are actually the lot, the lot areas. They're just kind of visible. But it's in a different format, so you'll, you'll see it eventually.
So these are now, the, go back, so those are, you could say, the debris left over after 1967, the lots that did not meet, but meet the new code, but were accepted as existing, and it's okay.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing nonconformities.
No, I'm not sure that...
It's your best guess.
Yeah, because like, the, this, this development out here, and with all those houses built before 1967, I have my doubts about it. Constitution Avenue, were all those built? I don't know. But, but nevertheless, these are nonconforming lots in the village. I, you know, we haven't been able to do the research on every single lot.
No, I understand, I understand. It's very helpful.
Nonconforming lots are not exclusive to the historic districts. This is the point of this slide. And while they do not compromise a large percentage of the total area of R1, right, you can see that from here, they are characteristic of the historic village. This is a list of all the dimensional requirements for conforming R1 lots taken from the current code. The area variances being sought by Sam can be broken into three types. Those related to the size of the lot, those related to the setbacks, and the last, parking. So number nine is actually related to the size of the lot. Number eight is the off-street parking. Because they relate to the presentation so far, we will first look at the need for the setback variances, numbers four and five. We'll circle back to the dimensional requirements, one through three, and number nine. As I've stated, in order to preserve the historical relationship between the buildings on the two properties and Sam's vision, the new building is proposed to be located in the same footprint as the existing stable. Since property surveys are not public record, we do not have actual dimensions to work with. But looking at aerial surveys, it is easy to see if front yards are less than 25 feet. Though not accurate to more than an estimated and conservative plus or minus five feet margin of error, we are able to roughly dimension using the e-parcel measurement tool on the Putnam County website's e-parcel viewer. This image also conveys the typical front and yard setback in the immediate neighborhood. Across the street, it is a straight line, more or less, that goes across, so...
Just, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but just so we all understand. So your red horizontal line, that is the presumed 25-foot...
That's correct.
With accuracy issues noted...
That's right.
From the property line to the, into the lot.
That's correct.
And the, the vertical on the ends is what?
It's just, that's the length, the 25-foot length?
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
Okay, so now we're gonna get into the numbers. This is the stuff that you're more used to, but... Let's just start with this first. So here are the numbers, sorry. So this chart, and many to follow, show tax lot numbers in the first column of each of these addresses. And then relevant dimensional information for the dimensional requirements. If you can see this, but, but in the yellow column, we have assigned yes or no value to each tax lot indicating the conformance with front yard setback. This way, we obtain a quantifiable result while acknowledging a possibly, a possible and very conservative plus or minus five-foot margin of error.
What, I'm sorry, big picture. Are these, of all the village lots, what are these?
These are those which are 7,500 square feet or less.
All right. So they're the lots that are conforming?
They're nonconforming.
Nonconforming.
Actually, none of these are 7,500.
Or less, okay.
Seventy-four ninety-nine.
Nonconforming.
So to repeat the point of the area nonconforming lots, 7,500 square feet or under, roughly 90% are nonconforming with regard to front yard. Even when we look at the lots that have roughly half the required area, 4,000 square feet, 100% are nonconforming with regard to front yard. The 4,000-square foot is somewhat arbitrary, a little more or less half, but it shows how many lots are just over one-half of the required area. Particularly in the historic districts of Cold Spring, noncompliant front yard setbacks are the norm, not the exception. Sam is requesting a 22.4 front yard setback variance. Again, as we do not have actual dimensions, dimensional data, as surveys are not public record, we cannot confirm this analysis numerically. However, side yards were similarly measured and visually confirmed to be nonconforming. As each side yard has to be 10 feet to be in compliance with district minimums, it is clear that the most lots have at least one conforming side yard, but not a second. Of the 303 area nonconforming lots in the village, 90% are nonconforming with regard to side yard setbacks. Of the 106 R1 lots in the village that are less than 4,000 square feet, 0% are conforming and having two 10-foot side yards. Twenty-One Parsonage has a side yard that is 31 and a quarter feet, and the other is one and a half. So Sam is requesting a variance for a north side yard of eight and a half feet.
Excuse me, Paul. That last slide showed properties that had a total square footage of less than 4,000?
Equal or less than 4,000. And this is all in the book, and it's actually legible?
Right, that's fine. And that's, that's the number of lots that are actually under 4,000 square feet?
That's correct. 106. The building as it is, so this is the property, this, this is the entire original parcel, so this is Thirty-Six Pine Street. So it's in the context of Pine Street, which is a lot to the east. If the structure were moved to the southeast by just under nine feet, the need for a side yard variance would be eliminated.
Could you? I'm just catching up to this, and I have a feeling that people in the audience might be too. Could you start that again and then identify those dash lines, what they are?
Sure, so, so this dash dot line...
Get it squared, where's the streets, you know?
Sorry, this is Parsonage Street. So, so by convention, architects always have this thing where they wanna put north up on a page. So a lot of these are tilted because up is, north is straight up. So it's why it's difficult in Cold Spring to really talk about, you know, east and west and north and south, but anyway, vaguely, that's it. So here's the stable, here's Thirty-Six Pine Street. This was the original lot. This is the lot that the stable sits on. These numbers that are off to the side, which may be marginally legible, are the dimensions of the structure to the property lines. And so this is a resultant, you know, of where it is. And then these are standard surveying language, which gives you coordinates for an access line and orientation and a length. So for example, if you could read this, my glasses are not great, but that says 48, and that says 70.
Are the dotted lines the required setbacks?
Yeah, so this, this rectangle here is within the setbacks. So that's a side yard setback, that's a side yard setback, rear yard setback, which we don't have to talk about. I think you actually improved minutes where you said that we had a rear yard setback, but that's not the case. And here's a front yard setback. So again, this is the building as, that was the building as it is. This is the structure if it's moved in order to be here within the side yard setback. So by moving it southeast by this, you know... So by moving it southeast by this, you know, nine and a half or eight and a half feet, we would, we would avoid having to have any side yard variance. So, but the result would be that it's eight and a half foot closer to the neighbor at thirty-six Pine, and the loss of distance between the two buildings, aside from being more intimate with its neighbor, would reduce the actual and visual space between these two structures significantly and forever alter the connection between the two architectural masses. This image shows the structure moved to have code-compliant setback dimensions being fully within the setbacks, including the rear yard. So here's where we would have to put, we'd have to foot that rectangle in that other rectangle, which is within the setbacks, in order to not get these two variances. If we didn't ask for these two variances, we'd be reduced to five variances, right? So now, in this image, we've rotated it so that north is that way, but it's because we wanted to put it in relationship to photographs of the elevations of the street. So the orientation of the site plan has been changed in this slide, i.e. north is not up, to relate to a frontal photograph of the structures from Parson Street. On the left is an image as it currently exists. If the structure to be located by the district dimensional requirements for R1 lots, as in the right-hand image, such that it would be within the ten, within the ten yard, with, actually, outside of the ten-foot side yard and the twenty-five-foot front yard setbacks, it would lose any vestige of a historical relationship with thirty-six Pine, have the appearance of a suburban solution completely at odds with the character of the historic village, and erase the architectonic relationship that has enjoyed, enjoyed for the last a hundred and forty or so years. In what would probably be the worst possible solution, the new building would be within the setbacks and be ten feet from the brick house, appearing to be virtually upon it. It would be a detriment to the neighborhood and the district if the new structure were built within the setbacks, as it would lose the essential historic relationship it has had with thirty-six Pine and with the neighborhood. Any other option, though likely less expensive, less time-consuming, and by eliminating the two variances, would really be the end of the barn as we know it. I should note that in a workshop with the Historic District Review Board on November thirteenth, twenty-nineteen, and perhaps more emphatically on December eleventh, the board was supportive of locating the new single-family structure in the same location as the existing stable barn, based on this important historical relationship. They were also supportive of the project itself. In order to keep the structure in its current location, SAM is requesting again a side yard variance of eight point five feet and a front yard variance of twenty-two point four feet. Now we'll circle back to the beginning of the dimensional requirements. The first three dimensional requirements in village Cold Spring code and R1 districts are obviously completely interrelated. The twenty-one Parsonage lot is three thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. Since the lot requirement is seventy-five hundred square feet, I'm sorry if you get bored with these repetition of these numbers, but you'll know them at the end anyway. And the minimum width is seventy-five feet, that means the minimum depth for a conforming lot would need to be a hundred feet. And if the minimum depth is seventy-five feet, then the width of a conforming lot would need to be a hundred feet wide. This map of the West Point Foundry property, which is the title right here in handwritten, though upside down, again, we got this thing about putting things north, was made just prior to the Foundry filing for bankruptcy and documents the extensive real estate holdings. So this is a pretty big chunk of Cold Spring here, that the Foundry owned. This detail of the map shows the subject property, so it's here. Divided north-south with the name Geo Ferris, George Ferris, written on both lots. Here are number ten and eleven. There's enough of a blow up, but number ten and eleven are there in the corners. With a date, April eighteen eighth. And the slightest side here, the architect George Harney, the cover of the, the book you saw, the kind of pattern book of, of outbuildings in Cold Spring. And Silvania Ferris, as an engineer and occasional general contractor, collaborated in the village on such buildings as Saint Mary's Church, on Plumbush, the home of Robert Parker Parrott, and on the Cold Spring Cemetery gatehouse, which you've probably all seen too. Ferris and Harney are listed as architects and builders on the eighteen sixty-seven Beers map of Cold Spring. Silvania Ferris was related to this George Ferris. The original owner of the Pine Parsonage lot. And it is likely that either Ferris or Harney designed the brick house at thirty-six Pine.
Might I ask, before you flip that, so this is an eighteen eighty map and it indicates that the property would be a separate tax lot, is that?
It is this property right here. We're gonna get down to this, but what you're gonna see is that this was changed. The whole orientation of the lots changed.
So what happened is they were conjoined after, after a certain period of time?
Cause in the, it's. At this point, they're actually separated just as they are now. At this point, each lot is fifty feet.
Well, I understand that, but in eighteen eighty, they recognized them as being two different lots? Is that a map from eighteen eighty?
It is. So, I guess, so this is superimposed on the current tax lot map. So I don't know if you can see it, but here is a line, see that line? That's the line of the current map. So underneath here, you can see how this lot here is the Parson, is twenty-one Parsonage, and that lot there is thirty-six Pine. But, but you'll, you'll get there, just hold, hang on, you'll see something there, you'll, you'll understand better in a minute. The hand drawing and coloring on this map from the Putnam County Historical Museum collection shows the anticipated division of the lot before the hard-line official version was made. Where are we? So right up here, see that little green square? Right. We're gonna get a detail in a minute.
And, and the green was put on by who?
Yeah, good question.
No, you didn't put on.
No, this is a map, this is in the county.
As you saw.
As is, just like this. And it was clearly somebody who's, you know, making, keeping track of changes. And other changes indicated on the map might be used to establish a date for the map. Again, you know, we all love this kind of history, but it takes a lot of time to delve.
So it's a, it's a map in preparation for the zoning, the enactment of the zoning code?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of an analogy, but, but, so they had this map.
Was the date got on this map?
You don't know.
No, but there's nothing on the.
But it's before the lot was divided, right? There are these other divisions there.
Yeah.
So in, in the earlier map we saw with Ferris's property, there were these two lots. See where the fourteen and fifteen are, thirteen and fourteen? So that was one long lot.
It looks to me like on this map, it's showing that green square is what the map shows anyway.
Well, see this, see this number ten here?
Yeah.
That ten is describing actually this whole rectangle.
And it's just shaded, there's no line?
It's just shaded, there's no line there, that's right.
I'm sorry, what does the shading indicate?
It indicates some shade, some kind of change. So, so whoever did this map, and I would love to know who did it, whoever did this map was keeping track of changes. So they wrote down in here different numbers, you know, you can see these numbers. If you look at the original map, it talks about how there was no number seven used, right? So this is a, a map number seven that has different, you know, this is the first attempt at kind of documenting tax lots, let's say, right? Cause the previous one didn't have any, any ident, uniquely identifying numbers on it. So here, this is the thing that I think will help you out. This slide shows a comparison of how the east and west ends of the block has been divided at various times. So this is what we saw in that first eighteen eighty map. So, so right now, you can see, here's, here's our lot we're talking about here, right here, fifty-six. That was at one point ten point two, when ten became ten point two and ten point one. This, this is, this is obviously morphed over time. The original lot number ten was reoriented in the nineteen sixty-three Putnam County tax lot map. These are representations of those maps, but we have these maps. In the nineteen eighty-four amendment, the lots comprising current day thirty-six Pine and twenty-one Parsonage was divided by the Fatonsa family into two parcels. On May nineteenth eighth nineteen eighty-four per the deed, and on June twenty-ninth eighty-four per the tax map.
So can I ask you, Paul, before you switch from this slide?
Sure.
Where it says nineteen sixty-three, it's above, it indicates that eleven and twelve had already been sort of split off into separate tax lots before the code came to effect. Whereas ten had yet been split, had not yet been split down the middle.
Right, so, so this ten and eleven somehow got rotated, right?
Well, they got divided into three lots instead too.
Right, but the numbers were reused. And then this eight and nine went away and became thirteen and fourteen, and number twelve came from somewhere.
But all, all these divisions pre-existed the zoning code?
Those, the ones between. That's right, from, from there to the left, yeah, that's right. So, I mean, this is similar to that green map, right? Because somebody was clearly trying to keep up with changes that were being made, and that's what you would do, right? You have a map, you make notes on it, you would change and it would evolve.
Is this the most current division information you have, like above the nineteen sixty-three, that just pre-existed the zoning code, just out of curiosity?
That is. Yeah, we don't, I don't have a map that's between the two. One of the things that happened, I mean, I'll, I'll get to it in a minute.
Okay, okay, sorry.
A different company came, a company went bankrupt and another company came in and took over. These, these are not, not eighteen eighty, obviously, but in nineteen sixty-three, they were actually using aerial, you know, photography from space, and they were taking photographs and using that to make, generate these things. And aerial photography is kind of grew out of World War Two.
You know, it was brought out in the first hearing, Matt Francisco did all the rundown on this. We have a nineteen sixty-four tax map that shows the two lots. And I, I, it's hard to see the date, but I zeroed in on it with a magnifying glass and it says, you know, it's nineteen sixty-four.
So you'll, you'll, you'll get there, but I would love to believe you, and I would love to agree with you, but I can't because of the record, and we'll get there. It would be really to be.
I, if I may.
Sure.
I mean, I assume you're going through this exercise just to say that it's maintained its small lot provision? Cause one thing that wasn't covered is that zoning enactment gets, you know, happens, and the lots are pre-existing non-conforming, unless they were contiguous and held in common ownership. So I assume you're going to this level of detail.
I wanna leave this aside map for now.
Right.
I wanna finish the presentation, get the information, and then you guys go back about relevant topics. And then we'll go from there, okay? But I want, I want you to see this information first before you jump to other conclusions. Cause one of the, you have to be able to do in looking at this stuff is have an open mind.
We don't want, we don't want to upset your, your, your train of thought, but we just wanna do note that we're not, that we feel there should be another map in the middle between sixty-three and eighty-four.
I would love to see it, and you will actually see the evolution in part. So the current tax map, first issued in two thousand and four, shows the lots renumbered. This two thousand and nine map, right, that's here, twenty-nineteen map, which is the current map, was first done in two thousand and four. That's when this new company came into existence. The original lot was divided slightly unequally, so that the thirty-six Pine became a lot fifty-two feet deep by seventy feet wide, and twenty-one Parsonage, a lot forty-eight feet wide and seventy deep. The fifty-two and forty-eight having equal the original one hundred depth, or actually not the original, I guess, but this depth, right? A foil with the village of Cold Spring clerk produced no record of the planning board resolution that created the separate lots. Okay, so this is the nineteen sixty-three map that we're looking at. And like with the current map, it notes revisions. This is true of all architectural drawings, right? You make a revision, you reissue it, it has changes noted on it. There's note, this change down here says ten equals ten point one plus ten point two. And if you can read it, that word says split. And the date there is eighty-four, six twenty-nine eighty-four. So this is the, it is true, this is a nineteen sixty-three map, but it has revisions on it. This is like what that green map, that red map is. So. The lots appear on the nineteen eighty-four revision to the nineteen sixty-three American-era surveys generated Putnam County tax maps. And the subsequent two thousand and four SEWOL map, when the tax lot numbers were numbered, changed, reconfigured and renamed. This renaming severed the link to the historical tax lot parcel numbers. So in this map, I think you can actually see this. Now, in this map, underneath here, there's a number ten, and eleven, and a twelve. So they still have those original numbers on this map because it came from that earlier map, right? But then they also have the new numbers on them. But then those numbers were changed in a new system introduced in two thousand and four. Because the lot was subdivided in nineteen eighty-four after the nineteen sixty-seven adoption of the village code, it is referred to as a non-conforming lot, not pre-existing but non-conforming. As we've seen, the minimum R1 lot area requirement is seventy-five hundred square feet. So looking first at lot area requirements, this map shows area non-conforming R1 lots in the village, so we're going back to that map we've already seen. Unlike front and side yard setbacks, lot dimensions and area are public record. And this date, this data is taken from the Putnam County search property site. The previous map showed non-conforming lots in the village, and this chart identifies R1 lots that are seventy-five hundred square feet and under. The average of these three hundred and three lots has an area of four thousand seven hundred and two square feet. You may recall that twenty-one Parsonage is three thousand three hundred and sixty square feet in area.
Can I ask you, Paul, if you've done all that research, how many lots are in the village that are actually smaller than the one block we're talking about, twenty-one Parsonage?
Yep, yep, there.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
This chart identifies R1 lots that are under four thousand square feet. As I said previously, this number is somewhat arbitrary, but it shows how many lots are just over one-half of, or just under one-half of the required area. Fifty-two percent of the R1 lots in the village are non-conforming regarding area. Here's your answer. There are a hundred and six lots that are four thousand square feet or less in size, totaling thirty-five percent. So a hundred and six lots that are equivalent to thirty-six percent of the non-conforming lots. Seventy-six lots in the villages of Cold Spring are smaller in area than Parson Street.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Looking at the seventy-six.
Seventy-six percent of these.
Seventy-six lots.
Total lots are under the thirty-six.
Are under the thirty-three.
So looking at the seventy-six area non-conforming lots, so it's just they're non-conforming by virtue of their area. Lots equal or smaller than twenty-one Parson Street, the average is two thousand four hundred and three. Obviously, zero percent are conforming for lot area. Okay, so now we're gonna go to lot depth and width. Code minimum requirements for R1 width and depth. Looking again at area non-conforming lots equal to or less than seventy-five hundred square feet, the average lot width is forty-five, and the average lot depth is one hundred and one. I apologize, I don't, unless we bought, had a really good projector, you just can't get it detail enough to see these.
Can I? How many of these lots have houses on them?
Almost all of them.
And were these houses there before the village code?
That I cannot say entirely, without looking at every single taxing.
Makes a big difference whether they were already existing or whether they were built after the fact. Makes a big difference.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about it when we're done with this, but I think, I think you have a good point, but I think that you also have the answer to it. So looking again at area non-conforming lots equal to or less than seventy-five hundred square feet, the average width is forty-five feet and the average depth is one hundred and one. Twenty-one Parsonage is forty-eight feet wide and seventy deep, so above average in width and below in depth. Looking at area conforming lots equal to or less than four thousand square feet, the average lot width is thirty-two and the. the average lot width is 32, and the average lot depth is 84. Again, 21 Parsonage is 48 wide, is 70 deep, so 16 feet above average width and 14 below average depth, lot depth. Looking at area non-conforming lots equal to or smaller than 21 Parsonage, the average lot width is 31 feet and the average depth is 84. So here, Sam is requesting an area variance of 4,140 square feet. Changing topics now to off-street parking. Two parking spaces are required per dwelling unit in the R1 district. This series of maps identifies the subject property with a yellow rectangle. On this map, we see the designated one-way streets. Parsonage is a two-way street. This map shows no parking zones in the village. No parking zones are sparse in the neighborhood of 21 Parsonage Street. This map shows time-regulated parking zone in the village. So you can see up here, it's also one-way, but there's, you know, five-hour, four-hour, fifteen-minute, and two-hour parking. This map shows one-way streets, winter parking, no parking, and time-regulated zones. In other words, all parking restricted areas and one-way streets and winter parking. The western portion of Parsonage Street is designated no parking at two sections of the south side, so here, and one section of the north side. However, unlike the lower village, there is ample parking in the area, and the request for a variance would not impose a significant burden to the neighborhood. The site has already been configured to accommodate the first required parking space, so Sam is requesting a variance for one parking space. Finally, the code requires that each lot have, shall be of such a shape that a square 50 by 50 feet will fit in 50% of the lot. The second part of that 50 by 50 requirement, that is, that it fit within 50% of the lot, is the reason that 50% of the lots equal to or under 7,500 square feet do not conform. The provision seems to have been intended to address lots in the village that are primarily non-rig linear in shape. And only 15%, or three of the 19 of the adjacent properties at the intersection of Parsonage and Pine Street, comply with this minimum requirement. I have to note that because the original rationale for this provision is obscure in origin and purpose and seemingly irrelevant, in the current proposed revisions to the zoning code, the code update committee recommends deleting this provision. Full disclosure, I am a member of that code update committee. Unlike the other variances requested, it is difficult to express the variance requested in terms of a value, but it could be said that Sam is asking for a variance of two feet in one dimension and 30 in the other. So this table shows the dimensional requirements, right? The requirement here, the existing, the proposed, and the variance requested. In conclusion, 21 Parsonage Street is a rare and unique property in the village. In requesting these variances, Sam is seeking to preserve the historical architectonic condition the stable has had with its companion building since at least 1880. While none of the variances requested appear at first glance to be significant, while some of the variances requested at first glance appear to be significant, granting the variances will prevent the loss of a modest but historical structure by replacing it with a memory building, not slavishly equal in detail, but clearly allowing the structure to remain simultaneous legible, simultaneously legible as an accessory structure, 36 Pine Street, while emerging as a building in its own right. The ZBA plays an important role in preserving the historical reading of this property. To borrow one of the many relevant quotes from the comprehensive plan adopted by the Village Board of Trustees on January 10th, 2012, recommendation, adopt minimum and maximum standards for setbacks and lot width that support narrow lots, thereby continuing the small-town character for new development, and that reflect more closely the existing village setbacks and the lot widths, including the prevailing setback of existing buildings. As we have seen, this is a lot that is typical in the village for size, but very rare in terms of the opportunity to preserve historical context and relationship between two companion structures that now occupy different tax lots. Approval of requested variances will continue the long spatial and architectonic relationship, helping to interpret how the entire site was used historically, and will continue to contribute to the neighborhood and district as a whole. So thank you. We can now show the drawings or go back to other slides. Do you tell me what you...
It would help to put up an easel and drawings on board.
Should I put mine? Did you have one available, or you said that you had one? I have one that is here.
There's one in the office, in the board office. I don't have my key.
John, where are we on the green cards? Sam, do you want to make a statement?
I'll also present the plans. I'll make a statement in the form of sharing the plan for the building.
Maybe cock that easel a little bit that way for people to be able to see.
Thank you, everybody, for your time and patience listening to our presentation. It's a very important project to me, and I'm glad that Paul's helping with this. I'm Sam Bro. My wife and I are embarking on this project together. We bought the barn on Parsonage with the intention, we thought it was an exceptional building. We thought it's a complete and total anomaly in terms of structures in the village. It's historical, it's stark, it's beautiful. And whereas most people looking at that sale at that time were thinking of tearing it down, we thought the opportunity really was to preserve the history and also create a building that benefits the neighborhood instead of a home for raccoons. So this is the most current rendering that we have. It maintains, it may look a little skewed, but it does maintain all of the proportions, roof pitch, position on the lot, vertical siding. It does add shutters as an attempt to enable someone living in the building to let light in. The shutters have space in between them to let the light in when they're closed. They can also be opened to let more light in. But it preserves all of this notable characteristics of the current building. Here's the site plan. As we mentioned, the barn is in the, we're proposing the barn stay in exactly the position that it is in currently. We think that that is the best outcome for, like I said, the history. Also, for the neighborhood, moving the barn would be detrimental to 36 Pine. So we are adding a parking lot, a parking spot, but everything else remains as it is right now, which we think is the best outcome.
Could you talk a little bit more about why moving the building will be detrimental to 36 Pine?
I think there are two primary reasons why. One, from a space perspective, it would be crowding their property. And two, from an architectonic relationship perspective, what makes this building so special is its relationship to 36 Pine, and moving it is one of the core, one of the core things, in my opinion, and as Paul argued, one of the core things that makes this building special where it is now and worth preserving is that spatial relationship between the two buildings. So once you move it, you've essentially eradicated one of the most important elements, in my opinion, of why that building is so important.
When your plan, you put a car right beside 36, it's the back door of 36 Pine.
I think a car is much less intrusive than a two-story structure.
Could be debated.
This plan, I'll just leave it a second. This plan shows the first floor and the proposed basement. The first floor would have a, this is a modest building, it's not a condo space, so it accommodates a living room and a kitchen, and the basement accommodates a crawl space, an mechanical room, and a laundry room.
Is there a bathroom on the...
There's not a bathroom on the first floor.
So the door has, basically, it's an opaque door siding, your gray siding that break down on the door?
The door is designed as a window door. So non, is a transparent door.
But I don't see it on your rendering.
It's not on the rendering, so the rendering shows the...
Yeah, so you'll see it when you get the elevation, but this is the door you're speaking about?
But your rendering, I don't see the door on the rendering.
It's on the side. No, because it's on the side, so this is...
But I saw another rendering where you showed the side, and I didn't see anything on that wall.
The side elevations are here, it is there.
The one in your presentation was more of a...
It was just one elevation, so this is what you're looking for? Here's the door, and here's the window above it. So this is the side that faces 36.
I guess what bothers me is that I get the, you nailed it down technically on your drawing, but on your renderings, we never see, we never see the door, the windows, we don't see it when people would be in the building.
Well, we only have a rendering from the street side, so we certainly are happy to look at it.
To show that side.
We have, I mean, yeah, that's Photoshop, right? We didn't have the door in there. We were really just trying to talk about massing in that image. So, but, you know, the standard practice is to see it in elevations. I mean, renderings are nice, but I mean, it's also a lot of money. So we can do one of the, of the street side, if that is what you are looking for. We could do one of the other sides too. It's just about spending more money. So we'd like to see if the elevations can do that.
I've done renderings too, and the work is in locating and putting the textures on the elements and you've done 90% of the work to add, you know, 10% to show the windows and the door. You know, I don't think that's a big push. And I think that it's important because you're trying to, I get where you're going, but I think that for full disclosure, we should also see this building. If you're going to be doing renderings and showing us all the beauty of the site and all this kind of stuff, we should see it as it is going to be with people who live there. Because I don't, I think even Sam and his wife are going to want sometimes to not be looking through the slits between the siding, and they're going to, it's May, I want to see the, you know...
Yeah, for sure. I mean, that's really, you know, the point of this elevation, which is one that we showed in the slide presentation, because it shows the shutters open as well as closed. So this is that street elevation. Keep going.
Keep going.
The second floor contains a bedroom, sorry, the staircase to the second floor is on the Parsonage Street side. It takes you to a landing where the shuttered window is. The bathroom is immediately to your right, closet, the bedroom, and another closet. And that's the entirety of the second floor. We're also showing a metal roof on the building. This is that front door elevation that's side facing Pine Street. We have the glass door and then a window above it, continuing that design element throughout of the stacked windows, the window on top of another window. This is the back elevation facing Parrot Street, again, maintaining those double windows. And this is the side facing 301.
And there are no hidden operable windows in there?
No, that's a...
It's just a...
So the north side wall, that's the north side wall?
And west side, yep.
And that would then have no windows or whatnot?
That's the one that would be closest to the property line. That's the one and a half feet.
And then this is the Parson Street elevation with the shutters open and closed.
I mean, what I would say is that we have already been in two workshops with the HTRB. The first one was really more just getting acquainted with the project. The second one was more about the architecture, and this is, you know, these are evolving, these details. So it's not going to be exactly like this, it's going to evolve from this.
So before I give you these books, booklets which are copies of this presentation, I just wanted to give you some orientation. Because they're, PowerPoint allows you in such a way, you won't be able to make a head or tail of most of these dimensional tables. So there's an appendix in the back, and that appendix has some key things that we thought might be helpful blown up, so they're the same thing, but they're blown up to a scale that you can see them. And then there's one thing we didn't show, which is the Parsonage deed chronology, and it talks about the history. So I have four, I have five of these total, I have one for each of the board members. And we have one for the public to look at, which I would actually like back. But these you can keep, and if we need to make more, we can do that, but it's a...